Okay, we'll call the October meeting of the Falls Township Planting Commission to order. Could call the roll please.
Thomas Hughes?
Here.
John Haney, present. Edward Crow?
Here.
Brian Binney?
Here.
Mary Lestock is not here.
Yep, the record showed Mary is not here. Okay, our first item of business is the galvanized middle drive KIPC Fairless Hills Tax Parcel 13-051-001. Minor subdivision for the existing galvanized plant. So if you want to bring in our applicants.
Applicants are in the room.
Alright, thank you. Gentlemen?
Good evening, my name is Zach Severton, I'm an attorney with Eastburn and Gray, I'm here on behalf of US Real Estate, a division of US Steel Corporation, United States Steel Corporation. The application is pretty straightforward, we're proposing a minor subdivision of an existing, of the existing KIPC parcel. The portion of the property that's improved with the current galvanized steel plant is being subdivided off from the larger KIPC property. It's about a 25 acre portion of the property that's being separated. Essentially, the purpose of this is to allow United States Steel to sell the remainder of the parcel while retaining the galvanized plant. The boundaries of the subdivision are really dictated by the existing improvements that are already on the KIPC site, KIPC site, roadways, railways, existing buildings, things like that. So I'm joined tonight by Wayne Keever, he's the, he's the project engineer. He's happy to go through any of the waivers that we currently are requesting. And I guess with that, I would just ask if the planning commission has any specific questions, if they want Wayne to go into any specific waiver request?
If we can just touch briefly on all the waivers, I guess that'd be fine, I assume anything that's not a waiver will comply on the Jones Engineering Letter?
Yes it is.
Yeah.
Essentially, most of the waiver requests are based on the existing features of the site, the parking islands, the parking areas, and the roadway. We're asking for a waiver from, you want me to go through section numbers or really just the description?
Yes, please do, just section numbers if you could, and if you could, I know you have them listed, but if we could follow Joe's letter, I know that's how kind of we make our motions.
Not a problem, let me just, I'm working off of the screen rather than paper, so bear with me a moment. Okay. Requesting a waiver, section 19131A, to not require widening of middle drive, the existing private road on the site. 19136D, it requires curbs to be provided along all driveways, again, we request not to provide curbs along the existing drives.
And that's only a partial waiver request?
There are curbs in some of the areas. Well, sections 19137G, 1 through 4, all have to do with the planning islands and parking lots. Again, we're requesting waivers to not provide curbs, planning ship, planting strips, shade trees, or landscaping within the existing parking area. Section. Skipping down to 19148A, to not provide street trees along property frontages, again, along the existing private driveway. Section 191521C, to not require site capacity counts for the remainder of the property.
You will provide them for this subdivided parcel though, correct?
Yes. 19162B, to not require curbs along the existing street, again, middle drive. Section 19179C5, again, relates to site capacity calculations. And the last, the last two comments in the Jones letter relate to waivers that are not required. If you saw the waiver there, we're not requesting those waivers.
That's one, you're not requesting the last two waivers on the back page?
Correct, 19179D9 and 10.
Okay. So as part of the process of subdividing this office, are you, are you gonna, or are they proposing to put a gate at the new property location for the access drive?
There, there is actually an existing guardhouse at the entrance to the property and a gate at the rear portion. So there's a small section of middle drive through the site that will become part of the galvanized property that is currently closed off for public access. And that will remain.
So that, that angled section of middle drive become part of the property?
Yes, basically, looking at the plan from the bottom left corner to the top right corner, that entire portion of middle drive will become part of the galvanized property.
Any other questions from the board? I don't see any other review letters from Remington Vernic. Never mind, there it is, stapled to this other one.
They said, I believe they said there's no review comments necessary.
Okay, very good.
And the Fire Marshal also sent an email saying that he had no comments.
Then we also have a review letter from the BCPC that didn't really have raised any issues.
Yeah, usually that's all in Joe's letter. Is there's that anything else, or there's nothing else from the board or from the applicants, I'll entertain a motion. Joe, unless you have something, Joe?
Nothing at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Colleen, okay?
We're good.
I'll make a motion to approve the minor subdivision application for galvanizing plant US Steel on Middle Drive. TMP 13-051-001, Zone Materials Processing and Manufacturing. Township of Falls, Bucks County, Pennsylvania, JEA Project Number LD20-13. With the following waivers. Section 191-31A. Partial waiver of 191-36D. Waiver of 191-37G14. Waiver of section 191-48A. But there was a comment there that the waiver would be expanded to include the, to include the proposed subdivision. The dog concurs. 191-62B. And that covers all of the waivers. Also will include.
I don't think there's any other comments on that.
Nope, I was making sure, I don't think there is either. Everything else is covered in the, in the Jones Engineering Letter, okay, yeah.
Second to motion.
Seconded by Mr. Crow, could you pull the board, please, Mr. Haney?
Edward Crow?
Yes.
John Haney, yes. Thomas Hughes?
Yes.
Brian Binney?
Yes. Alright, thank you gentlemen, have a good night.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is Bums Holding Company, 140A Old Oxford Valley Road, Langhorne, PA. Tax parcel 13-003-001-001. Zone PIP, preliminary final land development for proposed storage building and leased parking area.
Good evening, Joe Blackburn from Whistler Pearlstein, here on behalf of the applicant Bums Holding Company LLC. With respect to its application concerning the property located at 140A Old Oxford Valley Road. The subject property is located within the PIP Planned Industrial Park zoning district and consists of approximately one and a half acres. I guess as a preliminary matter, Mr. Chairman, am I able to share my screen to walk the board through a plan, is that a feature that's able to be accommodated?
I believe they are, Dave, or is that, are we able to do that?
Yes, he should be able to share his screen, he's doing so now.
Okay, great. The subject property is depicted on the aerial before the board now. As the commission can see, the subject property is presently improved with a single-family detached dwelling. Which currently serves as the base of operations for Alien Fuel Inc. Which is a solar panel installation company that presently operates although somewhat constrained in that existing single-family dwelling. For purposes of orientation, you'll also note that to the west of the site is the existing Amazon Fulfillment Center, albeit located in Middletown Township. The purpose of tonight's application is really to accomplish two things. One would be to allow the demolition of this home or this structure. And in its place, construct an approximately 2,400 square foot building which would more appropriately and adequately serve as the base of operations for Alien Fuel. And two would be to drastically reduce the amount of traffic that is currently afflicting large portions of the township as a result of the Amazon Fulfillment Center. And the way that's going to be accomplished, if the board, the commission will indulge me, is the current base of operations for the Amazon Fulfillment Center is that it's a last mile fulfillment. So you have a number of vans picking up numerous packages daily. Currently, the drivers for those vans come, drive their personal vehicles and park in this parking lot. Are then loaded into passenger vans and shuttled throughout the township to off-site parking leases that Amazon has secured. Where they currently house their fleet of delivery vans. Those drivers are dropped off at those locations, get in those vans, and then drive those vans back to the site to be loaded and with deliveries. And then leave the site once again to complete their deliveries, then taking those vans to the designated off-site parking areas. To be picked up by passenger vans again and returned to this parking site. So we've got a really extensive, extra, several extra legs of traffic that are generated as a result of this configuration. What the applicant is proposing.
Joe, if I can just, I can stop you for one second, just to go through that again. The, they get dropped off in the, at the parking lot, in the bottom, in the bottom there?
No, they, they drive their personal vehicles here.
Yeah.
They park their personal vehicles here, but there's obviously no place for van parking here. The, Amazon currently has a number of off-site leases throughout the township and Middletown Township, and Falls Township and Middletown Township. Where those vans are parked in groups of 15, 20, what have you. So they park their personal vehicles here, a number of those drivers are loaded into passenger vans. And then those passenger vans drive them to those off-site locations where those drivers get into the vans. And then drive those vans back to the fulfillment center where they're filled with deliveries, so. What we're proposing as a part of tonight's application is really twofold. One would be the, as I alluded to, the demolition of the existing dwelling on the site. And in its place, the construction of approximately 2,400 square foot building which would serve as a more appropriate and adequate base of operation for Alien Fuels. Along with the construction of an 81 space parking field. Three spaces of which would be needed to accommodate the Alien Fuels use. And the remaining 78 spaces would be leased to Amazon for them to consolidate their existing off-site van parking and park those vans overnight here. So instead of those drivers coming to this parking lot and then being shuttled off-site only to bring their vans back. They will come, park here, sidewalk will be installed, and they will simply walk to their vans and then take them around the corner for fulfillment. So we're really cutting out four legs of traffic through the township by accommodating that parking field. We are in, or we did appear before the Township Zoning Hearing Board in June of this year to receive, to request, and ultimately receive two items of relief. One with respect to the use, that being of a parking field to service an off-site facility. And the second with respect to impervious surface coverage to permit a 62% coverage whereas 50% is permitted, both of those items of relief were granted. And we are subsequently now in the land development process, the plans before you tonight, seeking preliminary final approval for that. We are in receipt of Mr. Jones' October 21st review letter, which I am happy to report contains all will comply items. With the exception of a few waivers that I'll touch on briefly. We are also in receipt of the Remington Vernic October 26th Traffic Review Letter, which the commission will note, all items have been marked as satisfied. So all traffic concerns of Remington Vernic have been addressed. Run through briefly the items, or rather, the SADO waivers that we're requesting in conjunction with this application, and I'll cite the sections as the last applicant did. The first waiver is for section.
Before we do that, Mr. Blackburn, does any of the commission have any specific questions? I know I do.
I do, I have a couple of questions, um, you know, you guys have gone over, you know, I looked at everything you had, and you gave a great presentation of the parking lot. My question is about the building, being that, you know, that's going to be, is that going to be an office building?
Yeah, it would, it would be office, they don't have any materials stored there. The, the solar panels will get typically, they're delivered directly to the site. So the, the 2,400 square foot building that's shown on, on the screen before you now is strictly office and administrative, and they have three employees that will be there at any given time.
Right, right, so when you do an office space, are you not required to have so many, so many parking lots, parking spots specified for that amount of square foot?
Yes.
Can be blocked off, or is that going to be part of the leased, leased area?
Yes, so there are 81 spaces total proposed on the site. Three of which are, to your point, required for the office space use, and those are the three designated here that are obviously most proximate to the office. So these three spaces satisfy the minimum parking requirement for the use. The balance would be for Amazon, and that would obviously, you know, be reflected in any approval, is that obviously we're satisfying the parking requirement here for the Alien Fuels use, yes.
Why would an office need three garage doors?
Um, are there three garage doors? Uh, overhead. Overhead doors, Justin, I'm joined this evening by Justin Gianotti from Dynamic Engineer, the, the project engineer. Justin, if you can.
I think there's, there's a little misunderstanding, so it is going to be used for office and storage. So for the most part, panels are delivered directly to the site. But there will be the, the storage of their materials and their worksite tools and all on this building, so.
Tools, yeah, but not.
Not, not storage of solar panels, correct, they get delivered directly to the site.
Do they currently store things at their, at their location now, or is that going to be a new?
You know, they, they currently stored area. They currently store tools and materials on site, in, albeit in a, in a single-family dwelling, so you can imagine that's probably quite constrained. But that is something that's ongoing now, they, right now, they don't accept deliveries of the solar panels to the site, nor would they be, you know, proposing to do that as a part of this expansion.
So according to the flow of traffic that you described. All of these 80 trucks that are going to be parked in this parking lot have to exit Oxford Valley Road and make a left on the West Cabot Boulevard?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
That's a dangerous intersection. I almost got hit there. There, on the corner there, there's all kinds of brush and things, I mean, you're going to put 80 additional truck traffic trips out that way? I think something needs to be addressed about that.
We did a traffic impact assessment, and Justin, as I said, Remington Vernic identified no issues with the traffic flow. There's obviously, again, I think it's important to remember that right now, we have, you know, several trips going in and out, up and down Old Oxford Valley. And we're going to be eliminating four of those, those being the trap, the passenger vans that are going in and out, delivering the, the drivers to their various locations throughout the township. So it, it's kind of like an existing condition, I would say, and we're, we're reducing the number of those trips now.
I don't think you are.
People are coming out of Oxford Valley Road and going right on Cabot to get to, to get to Route 1 or to get to Oxford Valley Road. Because they have to, they're going out to wherever the, wherever the vans are stored, and then they have to come all the way back. Via Cabot Boulevard West to get over to the fulfillment center. They're not coming out of Oxford Valley Road and then making that left, which there's going to be a lot of those trips.
Would I, would I be wrong in assuming that, that, the, the 81 trucks that are going to be parked at this parking lot are not going to be the only trucks that are still coming to this fulfillment center? They're still going to have offsites parking, and they're still going to be required to go take shuttles to these other parking spaces. I doubt that 81 trucks is enough trucks to accommodate all deliveries out of this building.
Hey, hey Brian, can I, can I put my two cents in, kind of knowing the situation? Then, I, I disagree with that parking lot with the amount of people going through there, you have all the workers working in that building. You have, they typically run two shifts, and you all the workers working in that building are, are parking in a lot of the spots. The other sites, which I know five or six around the site, they leave their vehicles at that site, Burns Auto, Reedmans. There's not that many people coming in there that are actually getting escorted offsite, you actually have numbers of that. And you're really not taking into consideration the two shifts that work there, that are actually doing the sorts and loading the trucks that are coming in from the Amazon tractor trailers.
When you say there, there, there are other people who are obviously, their base of employment is, is in the Amazon Fulfillment Center, is that what you're alluding to?
Correct.
And there's, there's, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You have third-party contractors that do the maintenance and everything else in that building.
Correct, so there's obviously onsite parking for that currently here, and yes, some of these parking spaces would be for, you know, the people that are housed or based in the fulfillment center, certainly. So we're, we're, we're not eliminating that, we're, but the, the parking lot is adequately sized for that purpose now. So those, and those wouldn't generate additional trips, I mean, if you're, if you're parking here and walking here, you're still going to park here and walk here. So no additional traffic will be created as a result of that.
But when I was out, my.
No, what, what, once, well, if you don't mind, so what I, I don't think there's that many vans going from there now. What I see coming in here is you're going to have more trips because you're going to add the vans closer. I don't think the impact of the amount of people that are being shuttled around from that site is, is that much compared. I think you're going to be adding more trips because you're going to have more vans, most of the sites around here have, they park there, and then they bring the vans from those sites to this building. I think with the 81 trucks you're going to have there, you're going to actually put more trips going through here with people leaving, granted it's going to come out a different entrance. But I think it's going to increase the actual amount of traffic in that area.
One, one thing I will add with talking to the traffic engineers, we did note that they, they did review the plans, and they, they said it's going to be an improvement from existing conditions. I mean, one thing that this plan does not show is that a lot of the vans are being staged there now. Albeit maybe illegally making the trips, and they're, it's causing congestion all through that area. So the way traffic studies usually work is that if a PM or AM peak hour is increased by 100 trips, it generates, it's considered a significant increase in traffic. At the most, we're about 78 new trips on the site, which is not, the industry standard is saying that that is not a significant increase in trips. I understand the, the site distance and all the other concerns that you have, but we did review this with the traffic engineer, and it does say that the road system as designed can handle the increase in traffic. And it was noted several times that this is an improvement on the existing condition, because these, these vans are making those trips now, from one way or another.
And they're making them from much further distances than around the corner. Yes, not all the vans would necessarily be making the left from Old Oxford Valley on the Cabot, but they, you know, may be coming from substantially, all 81 of those vans are coming from substantially further distances. Creating a much broader, you know, specter of traffic throughout the township, whereas now, they're going to be around the corner, able to shoot in without overloading the, the, the broader township roadway. By simply getting back to the site to do their morning, to do their morning loadups, so. And again, yeah, we do have the Remington Vernic Engineers, Traffic Engineers Review, October 26th. As Justin said, I mean, we submitted a traffic impact assessment, which, you know, they're all fair points, I understand completely. And the, the traffic engineer's conclusion was, as Justin said, that this will be an improvement. Did not identify any concerns with respect to the, the left turn in question. And noted in his, in the recent letter that all items previously raised had been satisfied. So I defer to the traffic engineer more than anything.
Well, I, I physically went out there on several occasions at different times of the day. And the site distance from that intersection to the left on West Cabot Boulevard is about 20 feet. It's, it's not, it's not a safe setup there to make a left-hand turn out of there. Does, does Amazon occupy the building that's immediately in front of the fulfillment center towards West Cabot Boulevard, or is that occupied by another company?
That's a multi-tenant, non-Amazon building, you're referring to this building here?
Yes.
Yeah, there's, no, Amazon does not occupy that, to my knowledge.
So you identified those parking spaces as being used by Amazon employees, and they're on a totally different property?
Well, this, this row here, you'll see that there's some parking along the, if I can zoom in. There's parking along this row here, there's parking along here, and I do believe they have some lease arrangement with respect to, the same owner owns both of those, I believe. And, or at the least has secured lease spaces for, for those spaces there, and obviously these spaces here, so.
Joe, the, the spaces that you're pointing to right along, that it looks like new pavement, that was done recently, that was done because the vans and the trucks were staging on the other drive, which is the shared access drive with the other multi-tenant use.
Correct.
And they got recent approval for Middletown to put in that second driveway off of Cabot, just to allow vans to stage and not back out, not back up into Cabot Boulevard, so.
Correct. Alright, I guess I'm okay with the rest of the board, we can proceed to the review letter?
I just, I just have one question in regards to the trips on Old Oxford Valley Road.
the trips on Old Oxford Valley Road. So it was said it would be an improvement, but are you saying it's an improvement on the overall traffic and not an improvement on the traffic on Old Oxford Valley Road? Sounds like we're going to have more trips up and down Old Oxford Valley Road to the tune of seventy eight additional trips during peak hour?
No, I mean, that, the way that the traffic study was done, it's, it's based on PM, P, AM and PM peak hour trips. Those vans are making that trip right now. They are, they're being parked in front of this property as, you know, in current conditions. They are going back and forth, as they said, from shuttles. So yeah, to answer your point, the traffic is going to be an improvement on the regional system as a whole. And there's not going to be a significant improvement on Old Oxford Valley Road, as you noted. So but to answer your question, it's, it's going to be an increase, but it's not going to be an increase that's considered significant to the point that it warrants any improvements that the road can't handle.
But the, you said the increase was seventy eight on a, just during peak out, uh, you know, during a peak time period, whether it's AM or PM?
Correct. Which is not, I mean, that's not considered a significant increase in traffic.
And we have.
I'm sorry.
Do we have how many shut, how many shuttle buses run there for each shift? How many people, they're taking, how many shuttle buses they have?
You mean total?
Correct.
One in a day. Really generating out of that parking lot?
Oh, out of, out of this parking lot, the, the one to the south?
Yes.
I, I don't know the answer to that question though. But I mean, if you think about it, I mean, the, the Amazon deliveries are, yes, it's, it's measured in AM and PM peak hour trips, but um, you know, it would be principally AM pickups and loadups and then they go out and they deliver their packages throughout the day. So.
Yeah, they did say the traffic study and your traffic engineer agreed that the, the delivery service study, it doesn't really fit the mold of the traffic study because it's a longer day, the, the, the pickups and the drop offs are dispersed throughout the day. So um, it is diffi- difficult to actually quantify under typical standards, but it is an increase in traffic dispersed over the entire day. So it's not going to be a significant hit at one point.
Yeah, my, my concern is you're going to run the vans two to three times a day, um, with different shifts and you also, I'm looking at the traffic study now, you're not taking into consideration that the personal vehicles that people bring on to do the one-off pickups for Amazon and do their deliveries as well. Um, I, I really, I know we have the traffic study here, but as you said, I don't think it takes into full dynamic of what's coming into that building, but the delivery vans, the people parking the parking lot, workers in the building, and then the extra, especially during the peak season, which you hit Black Friday through Christmas, how many personal vehicles they're going to come in that missed on the original ship outs with, uh, with their pickups and then they're going to go out through which is mom and pops, not their typical train drivers. They're going to come in in the personal vehicles, drive into that building and then, and leave. So I understand what you're saying with the traffic study, but I don't think it's taken into consideration all the variances that are coming through.
But that's happening now. I mean, that, that's, there, there is no, I think what's, what, what's maybe being missed is there is, this would not allow for any expanded or more intense use of the Amazon fulfillment center. There's not going to be more deliveries generated as a result of this. There's not going to be more vehicles that are going to that center to do pickups. Those mom and pops, those one-offs, they happen now. Um, the same number of delivery drivers as are currently going to that site will continue to go to that site after this improvement, if it, if it were to be improved. They're just going to be a, a certain number of those vans will just be doing so from a much closer location and not having to drive from the other side of town in order to, to drive their van across town in order to get those pickups. So I understand what you're saying. Yes, there's obviously, you know, um, holiday peak hours. We see, you know, that was candidly the reason that this second access drive was installed was in fact because of, uh, you know, the holiday rush. So as to allow for a more looped system. So that's already the case. Uh, that situation will not at all be exacerbated. That, as I said, I, there is no, these are not eighty one or seventy eight additional vans. These, these are not additional pickups. They're already occurring right now and they're just going to be able to access the site without having to drive their vans across town to do that.
Why can't, why can't, uh, there be an access directly from this proposed parking lot to the access road that was newly created? And not have the vans out on the Oxford Valley Road and making that left turn at all?
Uh, well, and Justin, you can jump in. We did, uh, evaluate the feasibility of that. It would, uh, obviously impact the queue line. Uh, it would also, you know, diminish the, or necessitated, uh, you know.
Uh, parking.
The, the, excuse me, the pervious area, excuse, yeah, the pervious area would have to be further, further, uh, reduced. And we didn't think that the additional impervious um, would, would flow well. Justin, you looked at it closely because we did evaluate not only a, a, a direct punch through, but a punch through to Cabot. Um, and for a numer- for a number of reasons, decided that was not feasible. So uh, I mean, candidly, if you're talking about punching out here and making a left, I don't know that that's any different than punching out here because you've got the median. So you'd almost have to make a left and then turn right back in. And if you're going to punch right through here, you're going to be doing so in the middle of the queue line, uh, which would obviously, you know, potentially result in some of those vehicles having to be backed up onto Cabot Boulevards to make, to make room for them, you know, coming into the queue further up here.
Is there any way to say get across the, you know, Old Oxford Valley Road from that, from the parking lot to the south there?
From down here?
Yeah, I, I didn't go that far down Old Oxford Valley Road to see what those conditions look like.
Well, the train tracks are right here and you're talking about, I mean.
Because look, there, the, the shuttles are coming out of that lot and they got to ultimately get to the fulfillment center. Is there a way to short circuit that whole entire Oxford Valley Cabot Boulevard loop by?
There's, there's no access. If you were to go down south on the plan right now, there's no access that you could see. Uh, that you could get around the back of the facility, if that's your question.
Yeah.
Tom, they're not, yeah, Tom, they're not taking them down there. Uh, they're taking them offsite to either Reedmans or Burns Auto to those things. That's basically, there's a, there's two bridges that you walk over there. Um, to the other side. When I was at the postal facility, uh, they did some renovation, but there's no access. You had to park there and you have to walk over by foot.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, okay, but. There's a number of streams too that cut through there as well. So that's, that's the other concern there. That's, uh, there's two streams that cut through and go underneath the road and Old Oxford Valley Road. I mean, I think the, the, the one point that we want to hit is one, uh, we did account for flex shift drivers in the traffic study. That was a request of the traffic engineer and that was entered. Um, so we did account for that as well. And I think the, the biggest point is, is this is not going to cause any new trips to the facility. These are all trips that are existing right now in a somehow, in a, in a haphazard fashion. This is going to be an organized uh, parking lot for the mess that's out there right now. The, the, the Amazon facility cannot take on any more deliveries. It's just a matter of getting the deliveries out in a more efficient manner and without taxing your road system as it's being taxed right now.
You're going to have eighty one trucks trying to exit that parking lot in the morning and trying to make a left-hand turn down Cabot Boulevard.
But it wouldn't all be at the same exact time.
Yeah, I think the traffic study said, uh, thirty nine or thirty one was the AM peak, just. So you've got thirty one coming out for thirty, thirty one to thirty nine, one was the AM, one was the PM. So I apologize, but, uh, it would only be that number coming out in the AM and the balance in the PM. So.
Uh, per hour. So you're looking at maybe two to three, one car every three minutes, one car every two minutes. I mean, that's not.
Hey, Brian, they, they do stage at the, a change of shifts, they do stage the vehicles in the building as well.
I don't know. I, I, my concern is that's a lot of traffic just on, I'm, I'm just talking about just Old Oxford Valley Road. That's a lot of traffic going up and down that road that you have, uh, I think there's another single family home there that may be for sale.
That's a, uh, a plumber's office. You're correct. It is also similar to our current building. That is a single family detached one, but it is a plumber, uh, uh, plumber or mechanic's office. So it's not residential and and to your point, I mean, that is the only other uh, use taking access to all of Old Oxford Valley Road is our property and the neighboring, uh, plumber's property. Um, so yes, there would be traffic, but, uh, candidly, I, I got, I got a question who it's impacting because it's, it's a parking lot in our, in our property there. So.
So what, I mean, uh, there's nothing to stop the neighbor from doing the same thing you're doing.
The plumber?
Yeah, sell that house that, I mean, your, your alien fuel guy is doing that. Why can't the plumber do the same thing? And then that will have a hundred and sixty trucks in there?
Well, I, I mean, I think that's pretty speculative. I don't, I, I mean.
Not really.
I mean, they, obviously if they were to do that, they'd be back before you and the, the answer would be, well, we've already got, you know, thirty one AM uh, peak hour trips, you know, is this additional going to, going to exacerbate that? And I I, it's a little speculative, I think.
All right. Well, let's, let's move on to the review letter for the time being.
Great. Um, so as I said, we do have, uh, Mr. Jones' review of October twenty first. Um, all the items, uh, contained therein are will comply with the exception of, um, a few waivers, which I will run through again, taking my lead from the first applicant. I'll, uh, read off the, the section name uh, or the section number, the first of which being from section one ninety one dash thirty one A to permit, uh, so as to not permit the widening of Old Oxford Valley Road. Um, the, the, uh, requirement would be for a thirty six foot cartway, which obviously is, uh, you know, would, would exacerbate the stream impacts and weather impacts over there. And obviously we're not in keeping with the current condition. Uh, the second item would be from section one ninety one dash thirty seven B, um, which is, and I apologize, I should not have, um, dumped my screen so quickly, is to permit, uh, uh, low, less than a fifteen foot buffer between parking spaces and building. And that is in this, um, area here. As you can see, we have the five foot wide sidewalk between these three spaces and the building, which would be less than the fifteen foot setback otherwise required. Uh, third ninety, one ninety one dash thirty seven G one so as to permit longer than or more than twenty parking spaces in a row without a planted, uh, buffer in between. As you can see, we have stretches of twenty eight and twenty five, um, which, you know, again, in order to maximize the ability to, to use these spaces and, you know, further reduce the impact on, on the township roadway, we're trying to maximize our ability to park this site. Uh, section one ninety one dash forty four D, uh, so as to permit, uh, grading within, uh, within five feet of the property line. Again, uh, we have the necessary setbacks, but in order to, um, take that paving up to those setbacks, we would likely need to, uh, grade within five feet of the property line in certain of these pinch points. Um, one ninety one dash forty eight A so as to not require street trees. Uh, obviously the site is rather narrow. Um, so we are proposing to plant those trees throughout the site. Um, I think we have fourteen trees whereas nineteen would be required. Obviously we can't accommodate nineteen trees, uh, in that width and we're trying to maximize uh, the amount that we can plant on site. Um, and section one ninety one dash sixty seven B again, um, so as to not require curb along Old Oxford Valley, uh, again, in keeping with the current state of that road. And lastly, uh, a purely drafting waiver from one ninety one dash seventy eight C two so as to not require the depiction of, uh, improvements within two hundred feet. We are submitting or have submitted an aerial which depicts those. Um, pretty standard drafting waiver though. So those are, uh, the seven waivers that have been identified. Again, uh, with the exception of those items, the balance of the items in Mr. Jones' review are all will comply. Um, and I'll continue to make myself, uh, or Mr. Gianotti available for any, any, uh, additional questions the, the, the commission may have.
Um, I have a question. I just have a comment. Um, I'm not in support of the waiver for not widening the road. Um, this is a township road that's being used pretty much solely as a private driveway at the expense of the township. Um, it's not very safe. I almost got hit when I was driving down that road. Uh, I think it just needs to be widened. And then if the adjoiner comes in and does something, we make him widen it and we fix this road. If we're going to be, if the township is going to continue to own it, it should be treated like a, any other township road and it should be widened and it should be fixed up in the, in the frontage of, of this property.
But in to that point, uh, Mr. Gianotti mentioned, uh, that we do have some stream features here uh, that we're dealing with, which are, um, I think the principal reason why that's difficult. You can see, um, you know, those would make it very difficult to widen that road.
You have a hundred and fifty car parking lot and you're going to add another additional eighty some trips back in and out of here. I think it's prudent, prudent thing to do. I think it's safe thing to do and I think it should be done.
My big thing is this is we're really focusing everything here. I know the ultimate goal for you guys is to use this as a parking lot. Um, but if somebody came in here with just a building of a twenty four hundred square foot building, you know, we would have questions solely about this building. Um, this hasn't even been addressed. We don't know what kind of building it's going to be, what, what everything. I mean, you kind of mentioned what they're going to do with it. What a twenty four hundred square foot building that's going to be used as an office uses more than three parking spots. So I asked with that, you know, as far as with that, I was trying to look to see, you know, I think there's so many spots you have to have per, per thousand square feet. Um, I was trying to find it. I couldn't find it specifically what the number was, but I do believe it would be more than three. Um, as far as with that, um, twenty four hundred square feet is pretty big. Um, so that was my question is when it comes time to it and they build that building, is there going to be enough spots to comply with that building as far as being used as an office?
Just, just to clarify, so the, the ordinance parking calculation is based on employees on the major shift. So it's one point two five spaces per each employee on a major shift. Two spaces for each management personnel, one for parking space for each business related vehicle. So they, they only have two employees and there's new vehicles. So that's where the, uh, the three parking spaces comes into play.
Well, you're, you're applying an industrial parking requirement to an office space. Um, I mean, obviously an industrial parking would count the employees because there may be a hundred employees rather than a building square footage. But I think there's a different parking requirement for an office space rather than an industrial.
Well, it, it, the use is an industrial use. I, I perhaps misspoke when I, you know, generally classified it as an, an office. It's not an, an office building in the true sense. It would be the base of operations for Alien Fuels, which is classified under zoning ordinance as an industrial use. So.
It's a contractor's yard.
Joe, the, the applicant just actually reached out to me and he said that they are going to be proposing to park their vehicles overnight inside the pole barn for security. So that's the other reason for the overhead doors. It's going to be vehicle parking inside. So.
Overnight.
For the trucks for overnight.
Yeah. I mean, all I can say to that is that, you know, we've obviously undergone a, a zoning review, uh, as well as, you know, by both the, the zoning officer and, and, uh, Mr. Jones and, um, the, 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 the parking, the, the number of parking spaces has not been raised as an issue for which relief will be required. Um, we, we satisfied the number of parking that is spaces that will be required for this use.
Joe, I didn't see it on the plan. Could somebody show me where the dumpster is?
No, no dumpster proposed onsite right now.
So where's the trash go from the business? Yeah, that was, that was one of the, that was one of the comments and they said they would will comply to revise to include outdoor collection stations.
Sure. And, and we, we can do that. The, the ordinance says where indoor collection is not provided. So we were going to provide indoor collection for the, the storage center. Uh, we could easily eliminate uh, van parking spots for a dumpster if needed, but there's, there's no need to provide trash facilities for the, the delivery vehicles.
Yeah, again, I mean, I think what's maybe being missed is that from, from an alien fuel standpoint, it's a two employee operation. So um, looking at the requirements for that use, uh, certainly a dumpster would not be uh, you know, required, especially when they allow for indoor storage of, of, uh, those facilities, which is what we've been proposing here.
I guess with with the dumpsters, the, the, the current use, if if, uh, you know, they're based on the current use of the facility, they're going to, uh, you know, they store most of their trash inside and, and uh, have no need for dumpsters. Now what's not to say that uh, you know, they'll sell that business or building, someone else will come in there and then they.
uh, you know, they'll sell that business or building, someone else will come in there and then they in turn will need, you know, uh, dumpster storage.
Well, then they would have to comply with that. Again, I think, I mean, we can speculate all night as to what the use 20 years from now might be, but I think we have to limit ourselves to what the use being proposed is. And, um, obviously if the use were to change in the future, then that future user would be, uh, it'll be incumbent upon him or her to demonstrate compliance with the provisions. So, um, our current use, uh, is compliant. Um, and, and, yeah.
Mr. Jones, you have anything?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would just like to clarify that, um, a little bit of a mischaracterization, characterization, I think, um, we didn't comment on the parking for an office because the plan shows it as storage. And it was our understanding that that building was gonna be used primarily for storage, which is why we didn't object to, you know, a parking calculation that doesn't represent office.
Correct. And I, I, I apologize again for mischaracterizing it as quote office. It would be the base of operations for alien fuel. And as I think we've talked about, simply be used to store, uh, their equipment, um, for, for when they go out on site. So that's, that's correct.
Sorry about that.
Nice. Seven, seven waivers were mentioned. Uh, and I'm only counting six. 191, 191 31A, 191 37G1.
You missed, uh, 190, you, you, uh, the, you skipped right. The, the second one mentioned was 191 dash 37B for parking within 15 feet of the building. Um,
Yeah, I don't have it on my letter.
Are you looking for it in, uh, Mr. Jones' letter?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's actually referenced in Remington Vernix letter under traffic, under number, number three on the Remington Vernix letter of October 26th. Uh, there is no objection to this waiver and requested from section 130, 191 37B. That's where it's referenced.
What was the date of that letter?
October 26th.
Don't have that letter.
That's the, uh, that's the one that we got, that was emailed.
Oh, okay.
Then I do have.
191 37B. Requested.
And that is the letter that we are, we continually reference when we said the traffic engineer reviewed it and took no issue. So that's, we, we were back and forth with them a couple of times.
All right. If there's nothing else on the board, I'll entertain a motion unless, uh, Mr. Blackburn, you have anything to add?
No, I, I, look, I, I think all the, all the, you know, i- items of discussion are, are well founded. I understand there's a, a concern over the potential traffic impact, but, uh, in situations such as this, we're left to rely upon, you know, the township's, uh, professionals and the township's traffic engineer, uh, reviewed in, in concert with our traffic impact assessment and identified that there will be no uh, detriment. The, uh, increase of, uh, 31 AM trips, which as Mr. Gianotti said, is over the span of an hour. So you're looking at about two, uh, two trips a minute coming out of there would, uh, I think be a drastic difference than the perception, which is that you're gonna have 78 vans coming out of there at one time, which is certainly not the case. So, um, I understand, uh, the concerns. Uh, we feel that the traffic engineer, our traffic engineer in concert with the township's traffic engineer addressed them. Uh, and I thank you guys for your time and, you know, um, good discussion this evening.
All right. Thank you. Is there a motion by the board?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve preliminary but non-final land development. Think there's, you know, four pages of comments here that, um, I think more discussion needs to be had. I, I'm not comfortable approving final land development.
Go ahead. They will comply. So is, is there something that we can address further, um, that would, you know, give you some additional comfort, Mr. Hughes? Because, um, as I said, they're all, we've been in contact with Mr. Jones extensively and they're all will comply. So.
So I, I don't, I, I'm with, uh, Chairman Jones here that I don't agree with not widening the path to 36, uh, not widening the path that the, excuse me, the waiver for 191 dash 31A. Um, and I just.
I mean, just to note that that's only to widen the half width in front of our property, which I understand is still a requirement, but it doesn't necessarily improve the conditions on the entire road. Doesn't improve the other side of the road. All it's really gonna do is cut down on a drainage swell, which runs along our property.
Makes it a lot safer for that blind curb for people coming around it.
On, right in front of our property?
When they're coming out of that parking lot. I almost got hit there. The road is only 18 feet wide.
But we're not gonna be able to utilize that road width, that additional road width, because the road then will taper back down to the width that it is currently.
And then, and then when somebody has to come in and do another modification, then we'll make them widen too. Right now, that other, I know you're not here for that other parking lot, but that other parking lot's got a whole bunch of issues by itself. You know, they're parking everywhere over there. They're on the grass. They're on the islands. The lights not out there don't work. They have temporary lights set up. They're occupying at least a half a dozen spaces with temporary lighting. So the whole parking lot back there is a mess. So the whole thing is, is just been got, it's, it's kind of snuck through the radar.
And that's, we're trying to improve a portion of that.
Right. So we would like to improve the road to improve the portion of that too.
And, and I'm still sticking with the fact that I, I really wanna know how many trips go out there. I've been on that site many a times during the overnight hours for emergency calls and I've seen vans parked there between shifts in the parking lot you say that you're doing shuttle buses from. I'd really like to see the study where that information comes because I firsthand seen vans parked there not being shutted out in that parking lot.
Here, and, and, and look, we, I, I understand your concern. Um, both our traffic engineer and your traffic engineer reviewed it. And even at the maximum, the worst case scenario, it doesn't warrant a traffic study. So that's saying even at the worst case scenario, all things considered, there's not enough traffic generated by this site to warrant a traffic study on this road. So.
But we apologize that we're just using common sense and not.
No, I mean, I'm not, I'm just, I'm going off of industry standards, which is all we, all we really are, you know, are held to do. And even at the worst case scenario, two or three vans per minute is not a significant increase and is not a degradation of, of, uh, of quality of traffic on a road. So that's where, that's where we're up against. And that's why I think both traffic engineers agree to that one point.
Mr. Hughes, would you like to continue with your motion?
Um, yes. Uh, approved preliminary land development application, Bum Holdings Company LLC at 140 dash A Old Oxford Valley Road. TMP number 13 dash 003 dash 001 dash 001. Zone Plan Industrial Park District, Townspeople Falls, Bucks County, PA. Uh, with the following, with approval of the following waivers. Uh, 191 dash 37B from the Remington Vernix engineer letter dated October 26th. Uh, 191 dash 37G1, 191 dash 44D, 191 dash 48A, 191 dash 62B, and 191 dash 78C2.
And that's a partial waiver, Mr. Hughes?
Um, I'm sorry, yes. Partial waiver to 191 78C2.
Mr. Hughes, if I might, um, just question, you recommended a waiver for 191 62B. That section is asking for curbs and widening along Oxford Valley Road. I'm not sure if you, if you noted that in our letter.
Oh, I only saw the widening of 191 dash 31A. So that would only be a partial to, to provide, uh,
Would not provide curbing.
Not provide curbing.
Thank you for playing that out, Mr. Jones. And the Remington Vernix letter has all been satisfied? Is that?
That's correct.
Is there a second? There's no second?
Second.
If there's no second, then I'll entertain another motion.
I'll make a motion to deny.
Is there a second? Ed, you're muted.
I second.
Mr. Heaney, please pull the board.
Everett Crowe?
Yes.
John Heaney? Yes. Thomas Hughes?
No.
Brian Binney?
Yes.
All right. Thanks, gentlemen. Have a good evening. All right. The next item on our agenda is Selco Partnership doing business as Verizon Wireless, 400 North Oxford Valley Road, Langmore, PA. Tax parcel 13 dash 003 dash 031. Conditional use for a new rooftop telecommunications facility on the Sheridan Hotel.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Wonderful. We just got transferred out of the waiting room. Um, I, uh, I, I believe that this application should be very straightforward and I'm not sure if the planning commission has seen the, uh, documents that were submitted both in hard copy and electronically to the township. Uh, but.
We have.
Wonderful. Um, Matt DeKita is viewing this as a new tower application, even though that, uh, we were placing antennas on the rooftop of the Sheridan at 400 Oxford Valley Mall. Um, I, I believe that, uh, his view of that is that this would be the first set of antennas being placed on that building. Um, it's.
The first set of antennas placed on any building in Falls County.
Certainly not the first.
It is.
Oh, it is really?
Yep.
Oh, I was, I was not aware of that. Uh, because it's very usual for this type of installation, especially a building of this height. It's a perfect, uh, application, uh, for telecommunications installation. It's, uh, uh, the building itself, um, the rooftop, uh, tops out at 132 feet. Um, the antennas would be placed on the, uh, three of, of the corners on the building, uh, pointing in different directions. One in the northeast direction, one in the southeast direction, one in the westerly direction. Um, and, uh, e- essentially it would be six antennas placed on the rooftop. Cabling would go down to equipment that would be placed in the basement garage. Uh, so there won't be any equipment on the ground, um, that would all be concealed within the garage. And, uh, I do have, uh, my witnesses who'd be testifying the conditional use hearing on the 16th who are available to answer, uh, any additional questions. I have, uh, Andrew Peterson, who's a radio frequency, uh, engineer who would be testifying about the, uh, significant gap in, in, uh, capacity coverage that Verizon has in this area. Because of the high volume, we have Sesame Park across the street. So Sesame Place across the street, we have, uh, the Oxford Valley Mall to the northeast. And Jefferson Bucks is immediately east of where the site is. Um, and of course, uh, Oxford Valley Road itself is a very busy road. So there's a lot going on in this area. People love using their cell phones. Um, there is a need for offloading capacity. Um, and also providing enhanced in-building capacity in the area. And that's, uh, one of the primary purposes for the site. Um, I, we have also submitted the photo simulations, uh, to depict what the installation would look like. And as you can imagine, um, with what is being proposed, uh, two antennas in each of three sectors. Uh, with the antennas being painted to match the color of the building, the antennas themselves are, um, fairly innocuous on top of the building based upon, uh, what we would intend to submit as, uh, our photo simulation exhibit at the time of the hearing. Um, and in terms of, uh, structural capacity, um, we have Andrew, uh, Miller, who's a licensed engineer with the Commonwealth. He would be testifying at the time of the hearing and can provide more details regarding the installation. Um, and in fact, the structural, uh, indicates that we're not even going to increase the loading on the building rooftop, uh, by more than 5%. Um, so as a result, uh, there's adequate capacity structurally for placement of the antennas up on, on top of that roof. Um, do, do the commission members have any particular questions regarding the application or any of the particulars on the application?
I think there may be a couple. Um, I guess one of the things, uh, I guess, what's the, uh, like Wershack drawing with all the different colors mean?
I, 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 I like to characterize that as being a, a bad art project for my, uh, my grand son. So.
If somebody could just briefly tell us what the different colors represent so that what we're comparing existing to the proposed, we see what the improvement is and.
Am I able to, uh, share the screen? Because I could.
Yes, you are. Yes.
Okay. Let's see if I can find these. Um, so that was applicant's exhibit, um, the design report, uh, A7, which is right here. And this is existing. So, uh, Andy, are you on?
Yeah. Chris, can you hear me?
Yep. Can, can you, uh?
Sure.
Can you see that?
Sure. So I heard the, the question. Thank you for that. Um, the, uh, the colors here are one way, or, or I should say one lens that we use to look at the network as, uh, radio frequency design engineers. Um, so it's not the typical uh, standard coverage and coverage thresholds that you may be used to seeing. Uh, what we're showing here is the same threshold of coverage. Um, but we're, what we're doing is we're delineating the geography, uh, by the coverage footprints of the individual sectors of the sites. So by way of example, if we look at the South Fairless Hills site, which is in the, uh, southern portion of the exhibit there, um, you can see that there's three footprints of different color coverage that emanate from it. We have red to the northeast, a yellow to the southeast and a purplish to the west. Uh, those three colors are representing the best server areas of the three sectors of antennas that point in those distinct directions. Um, and that is the standard setup, um, for, for one of these facilities. Um, it's, it's a typical setup is having three sectors that point, um, usually about 120 degrees apart from one another in the horizontal plane, uh, which gives us 360 degrees of coverage around the site. Um, and that is what's being proposed with our facility. So if we, if we look at, um, look at this, this, uh, this exhibit in particular, you can see in the area around, um, the location of the proposed facility, which is labeled Sesame Place. Um, I, I've drawn kind of a rough circle of where we're looking to improve coverage. That includes. That includes the park and the surrounding kind of heavily used areas, the commercial and industrial areas around it. You can see that there's kind of a confluence there of those two kind of colors, one from Oxford Valley, the easterly facing sector of the wood pole there. And then from the South Fairless Hills site, the purple sector that heads west from there. That's kind of where they meet, so we're on a we're on a seam in the network, if you will, where two sectors are meeting. And we have that network seam where we're being served at a distance. And we also have an area of heavy usage that's... Those are areas that cause difficulty for the network as a whole, because we're using a whole lot of resources from a distance. It's much more efficient to serve heavily trafficked areas from a closer site. So if we then flip to the next page, you can see that, once activated, the new Sesame Place site provides the three new coverage footprints, the yellow, the brown, and the other brown. Running out of colors here. And those would be the new best server footprint areas from the proposed site if approved and constructed.
So does that improve coverage from the other towers by, I guess, picking up some of the traffic?
It does. So it not only improves the coverage for folks who will now be served by the new sectors of Sesame Place, of the Sesame Place site, it also improves the service for folks in the coverage footprints of the sectors it's offloading, because, for instance, the South Fairless Hills site is now no longer stretching almost two miles to serve folks, let's say, in the park. It can now use its resources to serve the subscribers that are more proximate to it. So when we drop a site in like this for capacity, it not only improves the immediate area, but it improves the overall network as a whole beyond the footprint of its new sectors.
Thank you. Is there, I don't know if you're the person to ask or someone else is, but is there a reason that you chose to put antennas on a building that doesn't have any antennas versus a water tank that already has antennas on it?
So if you're talking about the water tank to the northwest?
No, there's one right on Austin Drive.
I see Austin Drive here.
In the pink area, the purple area there, you'll see Austin Drive?
Yeah, I see the label there.
Right, so there's a tank very close to Lincoln Highway. So probably right about where the brown is. Brown and the pink meet there, probably.
Yeah, um... All I can say, I'm not familiar with the tank, I can take a look at it, but when we have a capacity demand the way we do here from the park and the surrounding areas, it's always best to serve it from a location that's closest. So, you know, even moving, let's say it's a half mile over, maybe, you know, maybe... Yeah, I estimated it about a half mile from the scale, maybe a little less. Even moving, you know, that half mile away from the park, we're going to lose some of the efficiency of being, you know, as close as we are with this candidate. So it's... And I don't know the particulars. There is, uh... I'm hoping that we have our site acquisition representative on that may be able to answer if that tank was considered. But speaking purely from a radio frequency perspective, it's really an inferior candidate because of the distance that it would present from the target.
Jen, Jen, are you on by any chance? You might be on mute. Hey, Jen? No, I guess she's not on.
Unless she's JC, there's...
She is.
Oh, okay.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, it asked me something, I don't know. So to answer that question, I didn't look at that water tank, but the RF engineer specifically picked this hotel because they designed, I want to say DAS, around this property.
They designed what? I'm sorry.
DAS. Small cells.
And you want to talk about that and how that would impact this as well? Provide that on the board?
Sure. So there are some small cells which are kind of... They are more of a laser-focused solution for offloading very small areas. So there, it sounds to me like there is a DAS solution or a small cell solution that's in play in the area also that's going to work in conjunction with this macro site. So that's obviously influencing the location of this beyond what I had stated earlier with it being closer to the, you know, the park and the areas of heavy usage. So it sounds like there's a couple of reasons.
Okay, thank you. I guess, Mr. Schubert, I guess the Mr. Jones engineer letter, is it all will comply?
Uh, yes, with the one tweak, and this might just be by virtue of an older ordinance. At his page two, he's making comment that we have to demonstrate that there's a significant gap in wireless coverage. That's now been construed under the 2018 FCC order that we also would be looking at gaps in capacity as well. So I think Mr. Peterson explained the issue with regard to the capacity and what was trying to be achieved with this site. And the least intrusive means, you know, essentially, we're adhering to what we're supposed to be doing under the ordinance of utilizing existing tall structures rather than going out and building new towers. So this is what I would consider a non-tower solution, because there's an existing building and we don't have to build one of those macro towers at the location. So I think that we comply with that, with that one tweak, to make it consistent with current federal law. Other than that, I think these are all will complies.
My only comment is that, according to the zoning ordinance, the antennas are supposed to be screened by visual backdrop in a manner to make it visible to the casual observer. It refers to painting antennas when they're flush mounted onto a building. So I think this case, there should be some kind of screen for the antennas so that they're not visible from the ground. And that's keeping in with the ordinance.
There's also another solution, if that's the recommendation. I know Verizon has done that in the past, and assuming that structurally it would be capable of doing that, and that's something that the engineer can take a look at. There's another technology where the antennas can be wrapped in a reflective Mylar. And if I knew that was an issue, I would have brought up some material from the company. It's a company called Obscure. And essentially, what the Mylar does, it's a reflective reflective material so that it picks up whatever color the sky would be. If it's a blue day, sunny day, a cloudy day, it would reflect that back. And I know that there was a historic church in Philadelphia, in Germantown, where that was used. And it's pretty dramatic in terms of how those antennas can then blend into the background of the sky, especially viewed from the location of the ground looking up. So again, unfortunately, I don't know that I can bring something like that. Actually, I mean, if the planning commission is patient, I can search for that.
That's what I'm doing right now.
That sounds pretty cool.
I guess I'm not...
Here we go.
I guess, I'd like to see it, but I guess I would yield to Mr. Jones on that. But I think that there should, other than just painting it, I think there should be some kind of screening.
So if you can see it on the screen, this is the antennas are wrapped in this Mylar. And this is just, again, their promotional materials as to what it would look like up on top of the building. You can see where it is obscured and picking up the color of the blue sky.
I think that's less obtrusive than a screen wall. And it's less of a structural impact, because then you got to deal with the wind loads of the screen wall on top of the building.
Right. Now, this is that church I was referencing in Germantown in Philly. And that's what the antenna would look like. And these are, I was told, because I worked with the site acquisition consultant, who actually took, used this application, took these photographs. He said, "These are actual photographs and doctored."
I'd be for that.
Yeah, that's pretty cool, I think, actually.
It's like on a cloudy day, though. It's easy to obscure on a cloudy day. Oh, yeah, I would, I think they should, in lieu of painting, they should wrap them in the Mylar.
Yeah, I like that.
Just like Tony Stark's plane. So I think my only recommendation would be that they be either obscured or wrapped in this material and rather than painting, because I've seen the antennas painted and they still stick out.
Yeah.
Other than that, I'm okay with the application. If there's any other questions from the board?
What is that called?
It's a company called Obscure. Was it a Mylar wrapping? Is that what you were calling it? And it's, yeah.
It's a 3M wrap, right?
Mylar wrap.
Yeah, 3M. I think the company is 3M that manufactures it.
And would that be on the mounts, too?
I don't believe so.
We probably want to see them. They're going to be close to the ground. I don't think you'd see them mounts.
Yeah, the antennas would have to be in front of those.
Chris, we just want to review that, because at one point, we actually offered that to the landlord, and then when we got it back to Verizon, they didn't approve it, because it wasn't spec-approved. So it's just something that we need to find out if it's approved now.
But it's approved by us.
You can let the landlord know that.
Okay.
So there might be variance with the landlord than with us. Yeah. So I guess whoever makes the motion, I guess, would either specify that it would either be this or a screen.
Or a screening or whatever.
Rather than painting. Mr. Jones, you have anything?
No, Mr. Chairman, I will say that we will make sure that when this conditional use gets to the board, the supervisors, that that's included in the resolution.
I'll entertain a motion unless, Mr. Schubert, you have anything else to add?
Nothing else, sir. All right, I make a motion to approve conditional use application for Selco Partnership Verizon Wireless, 400 Oxford Valley Road, Sheridan Hotel, TPM number 13-03-031, Zone HC Highway Commercial, Township of Falls, Bucks County, Pennsylvania, JAE Project Number LD20-16. Date of it is May 8, 2020, with the condition that they will either screen or wrap the antennas with the 3M Mylar wrap, which would be at the discretion of Selco Partnership. I guess that's it, right? There's no other waivers?
And approval of the landlord, I think, was the...
Landlord, approval landlord, or whoever you need to get your approval from.
There a second? Second. Second by Mr. Heaney. Pull the board.
Everett Crowe?
Yes.
John Heaney, yes. Thomas Hughes?
Yes.
Brian Binney?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Have a good evening, everybody.
Take care. Enjoy the rest of the evening.
All right. Last but certainly not least is North Point Master Plan, Tiberon Road, Fairless Hills. Tax parcel 13-51-001-007, 001-002, 001-005. I'm not going to read all these. Diane, you got it. Sketch plan for the redevelopment of the US Steel KIPC site.
Good evening, everybody. Mike McGinnis from Begley Carlin here on behalf of North Point. Ordinarily, I would get into a lot at the beginning regarding the subject property and my client and Mr. Jones' review letter, but I think perhaps this is a site that everybody in the township is familiar with, and I'd like to kick off the conversation by just stating that on North Point's behalf, we're very excited. This is a site that we know the township has had a very particular interest in for a long period of time. And we think that North Point is going to be an excellent partner with Falls Township for a very long time to come here. So we want to thank you for the opportunity to present this sketch plan tonight. North Point is the equitable owner of the property with a closing date that is rapidly approaching. We would, for this presentation, I think, rather than have a technical discussion at the beginning regarding the review letter that Mr. Jones circulated, I'm going to, in very short order, turn this over to the North Point team to give some background about who they are, why they're interested in this site, and what their vision is for this property moving forward. I would note that we are planning on being back in front of the planning commission in fairly short order for what we're entitling. It's phase one of this project. So this is certainly not the last time that you'll be seeing us, and we think this is going to be the first of many trips that we'll be making to the planning commission. We have Greg Glitzer and Eric Clayce here on behalf of Gilmore Associates, who are civil site engineers. And I have Jeb Momont from North Point, who is going to provide the planning commission, like I said, with information about who North Point is and their goal with this site. So I have Jeb with me, and he has a PowerPoint presentation, which I believe Diane put up on the screen here. We can either have it done this way, or if we allow Jeb to have the screen sharing option, he can kind of go through this as he discusses North Point and the site, whatever the planning commission...
That option is available.
Okay, I think that might be best, rather than trying to coordinate it to have the slides move as he's discussing this. And then certainly at the conclusion of Jeb's conversation, we're happy to address any technical concerns, considerations, et cetera, that might exist, with the understanding, of course, that this is a sketch plan that obviously does not have all of the technical detail that we're going to be submitting as we keep coming back in front of you, moving forward for the project. So we've had great feedback with everybody locally, and we're excited to make our first public presentation here. And with that, I will turn the floor over to Jeb.
Great, thank you, Mike. I'm assuming everyone can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I'm also sharing my screen. Can you all see the cover slide?
Yep.
Well, welcome. Thank you for having me. We are, as Mike said, very excited to really be here tonight and unveil kind of this project that we've been working so hard on for the last several months. So as Mike said, this is the first of many, many stops back before this board and commission. And really excited to just share our vision, happy to answer any questions. I'm going to go through this PowerPoint, really hope to share, you know, who North Point is, what we are all about, what our vision is for this property. At a high level, talk about the master sketch plan, which is in front of you tonight, and then really just kind of facilitate what our vision is for this development. So my name is Jeb Momont. As Mike mentioned, I'm a partner at North Point Development. We are an industrial developer. We're based out of the Midwest. Our home office is in Kansas City, Missouri. Uh, we are a industrial, uh, developer. We're based out of, uh, the Midwest. Our home office is in Kansas City, Missouri. Um, I am located in St. Louis, which is really where our kind of second office is at. We've also got, uh, offices in, in various other, uh, cities, Chicago, Cincinnati, uh, Seattle, Salt Lake, Sacramento, Detroit, and, uh, a small office actually in, in York, uh, Pennsylvania. Um, yeah, our footprint, I'm showing a, uh, a map of the prop, or, uh, of the United States here. You can see all the orange dots. That's where our projects are located at. Uh, so really we are a coast-to-coast firm. Um, you can see in the top left-hand corner, uh, North Point is the, is really the most active. I'd say we're the, the number one industrial developer in the United States over the last five years. Meaning that we've developed more square footage, um, than any private or public, uh, firm over the last five years as, as tracked by, um, you know, capital in and out of the space. So we're very familiar with this asset class. Um, our primary business is, uh, industrial e-commerce, uh, logistics-based, uh, warehousing. Um, we've been in business for almost nine years. Um, and in that, in that very short time, we've developed, uh, close to 80 million feet now. Uh, we, we purchase on Anam about 2,000 acres of land. And we raise somewhere to the tune of two to three billion in capital, uh, per year that we place in our various projects. Um, on the bottom of this slide, uh, just presents our clients that we serve. We are a very client-driven, uh, organization, uh, meaning we try to solve the client's problems first. That usually backs into where we want to develop and why. Um, as you can see, this is kind of our, we call it the NASCAR slide, uh, the firms and the, and the companies that we work with across the country. Uh, we are, uh, General Motors' largest landlord in the U.S. Uh, we do a lot of business with Chewy.com, the pet food supplier. Uh, matter of fact, we own, uh, I guess, three facilities in Pennsylvania alone for Chewy.com, uh, Walmart, Adidas, Amazon. Um, obviously Amazon is very active in this space. And, uh, this year alone, I think we'll do 6 million square feet, uh, just for Amazon in our portfolio. Um, in Pennsylvania, outside of the Midwest, Pennsylvania is, uh, a state we probably categorize as our second home. We have, uh, upwards of, uh, 15 million square feet in, in the state of Pennsylvania, mostly along the I-81 corridor. Uh, Greencastle is south up to Wilkes-Barre, uh, Scranton in the north. We've done a number of projects in around the Philadelphia metro as well, as well as up and down the I-95 corridor from Staten Island, uh, down to Baltimore and DC. Um, a few things that differentiate North Point, uh, is that we really tailor everything to an in-house, uh, soup-to-nuts type, type delivery for our clients. Um, we have in-house civil engineering. Uh, I'm an engineer by trade. Most of our development team are engineers by background. Uh, we have Studio North, which is an architecture firm, uh, in-house. So all of the architecture that we'll propose before Township will be produced by North Point. Um, we have labor analytics, logistics analytics. We do the planning for our customers such as, uh, an Amazon, a Walmart, uh, a Chewy. We look at supply chain for them. We look at labor. We tell them why they should go in certain locations over others. Uh, so it's a, it's a service in-house that, uh, most developers, uh, in our space do not offer, uh, but we're proud to offer it. Um, so I want to talk a little bit about the project. So many of you know this property as the Keystone Industrial Pork Complex. Um, US Steel, um, owns this property, as you heard from the, uh, the first presentation tonight or the second one about the, uh, a US Steel Galvanizing Line subdivision. That is part of this transaction. Um, US Steel opened this site up in 1952 and, um, at, at one point in time, it had 5,000 workers, uh, up to, by 1970. US Steel shut the site down, uh, primarily in the early 2000s. Um, the only thing remaining from US Steel was a galvanizing line. Um, in the 1990s, I believe it's 1993, the US EPA, uh, placed a consent order on the property requiring its cleanup. Uh, this is a RICRA, uh, C-R-A, Recovery Resources Act. Um, it's not a circle of superfund site. It's a RICRA site, meaning that US Steel, who was the contaminator, is still, uh, solvent and still owns the property. They were required in the 90s to clean it up from the EPA. That cleanup started, uh, back in the 90s, is still ongoing, uh, through the Pennsylvania Act II program. Approximately 70% of the site is cleaned up today. Um, North Point, I'll talk about this a little bit later. North Point is going to be finishing the cleanup. And, um, and really in the early 2000s, US Steel started to take a position of, of heavy, of, of doing, uh, their own industrial development, heavy manufacturing, heavy industrial with users like Dominion, Covanta, GMA, Morton Salt, CSC Sugar. Uh, many of these folks who you've probably seen before in front of this board. Um, so today's profile of the site is a, uh, heavy industrial-centric site and the users. North Point is in process of purchasing this site from US Steel. Uh, we have a closing date of December, uh, this year, this calendar year. Uh, we've been working on this project really since the early part of this year, but I would say we, we come into an agreement with US Steel mid-part of this year in June. Reason that North Point was selected, uh, to purchase this property. Um, there were, there were many people, uh, interested. I'd say it started out in the 10s and 20s of, of users. Um, and, uh, private equity firms, developers interested in buying it. Uh, we were shortlisted a few times, uh, made a final cut really because of our, our brownfield expertise and our track record of these types of projects. And ultimately we were selected, um, not because we were the high price, but because we were the most capable, um, of closing the transaction and getting the redevelopment finished. Uh, so we've, we've assembled a, a local team of professionals. Obviously, uh, we've got our civil engineering team on here tonight, our local legal counsel and Mike, um, and a number of other people from traffic consulting, architecture planners, uh, geotechnical engineers, wetlands and habitat biologists, uh, geologists, environmental professionals. We've got a, a very solid local team, uh, really the best of the best in the area to help us through this project. Um, the initial project, I'll talk a little bit about it as we go along in the site planning. It is, uh, potential for, uh, 10 million square feet. We think that the project could grow over time, um, as we redevelop areas, meaning as we are able to move existing tenants around on the site, that will create more space to provide more, uh, buildings on-site. So that plan could grow to upwards of 15 million square feet. Uh, the initial investment from North Point and our partners is a billion dollars. So it's a big project, um, you know, really for industrial development. This will be the largest industrial development on that, really on the I-95 corridor, the eastern seaboard over the next couple of years. Very big project, very exciting for, for us, uh, for the community and for the region. Uh, this is a regional-type project. Um, again, we think with the project could grow upwards of, uh, 15 million square feet and a billion and a half total dollars. Um, North Point has an aggressive timeline. Um, as Mike mentioned, you'll see us again for phase one, various phases of this project as we start to redevelop. Uh, first phase is slated to begin early next year. Uh, you will see us very soon for the preliminary fi, final site plan, uh, request for phase one, which will be a 1.5 million square foot plan spread over a couple of buildings. Um, North Point is a speculative developer, meaning that, uh, we build an empty building and, uh, we typically lease those buildings up, uh, a lot of times before they're finished. Uh, but in most cases, uh, that building is, is, uh, is not finished for very long before a tenant will come along and take all or some of that. Uh, over the years, our, our business has been about 75% uh, spec development, 25% built-to-suit. Meaning that a user like an Amazon comes along and says, I want this exact building, build it for me. Um, over the, over the course of the last few years, that's transitioned more to about 50/50, 50% spec, 50% build-to-suit. Based on tenants needing more unique buildings, uh, more criteria in, uh, the clear height, uh, the, the automation and the, the racking and the different things that they put inside the buildings has, has driven, um, that to be about 50/50 in spec to build a suit. Um, and then lastly, uh, but not, but surely not least is, um, is the job creation. Um, at a minimum, we believe this project creates 5,000 jobs for the community, um, and, and it could be up to 10,000 jobs. And of course that could grow as the site plan evolves over time and we're able to put, uh, additional buildings on the property. So it's very exciting. I think it'll certainly be a shot in the arm for the local and regional economy. And, um, you know, of, of the, of the projects that we've created on the very first slide, um, we successfully created upwards of, of 50,000 plus new jobs and this project will, will certainly be one of those. Um, re, regional, uh, development. So this is really just a, a map depicting, uh, uh, the, the counties that we believe that this park will service, uh, in addition to, uh, the major metropolitan shown at the right-hand corner of the screen. I mentioned this was a regional-type development. We see the I-95 corridor as the, as, uh, one of the, if not the busiest industrial corridors in the United States. Um, being able to service, uh, roughly, uh, 10% of the population within a three-hour drive. That's 10% of the U.S. Forty percent of the population within a one-day's truck drive, uh, puts this area, uh, specifically, uh, northern, uh, east, northeastern, uh, PA, uh, I-95 Jersey corridor is really the centroid for users that they want to locate. Uh, when I say users like Walmart, E, uh, Amazon.com, uh, Lowe's, Home Depot, many of the, of the types of users on that very first screen. Uh, so it's ideal regional location. Um, access in and out of the property. Uh, so really, uh, what we wanted to depict here was the various routes of movement in and out of the park. Um, so as you see in orange, the park is highlighted. This is what the property that we're purchasing. Um, so we really have a couple of ways in and out of the site. I would say the primary access for, uh, truck drivers is along Tiberan Road. And they would take Bristol Pike, uh, likely south and eventually hit, uh, I-95 or, uh, take one over to 295. So we believe 295 obviously is the, is the route that truck drivers will want to get to. Uh, pedestrian traffic or, or commuter traffic will come in, um, via one Pennsylvania Avenue or Tiber. Uh, but Tiberan Road would primarily be the access in and out of the property and the primary route that a, a truck driver would take.
If I can interrupt for a second, Jed.
Sure.
So the access road that you show going through Pennsylvania Avenue, uh, travels through residential neighborhoods as it gets into Marsville. And that would probably be something that we would not be in favor of directing large truck traffic into that neighborhood.
Agreed. And, um, that's why we've noted, um, if you can see the zoomed-in version here as Tiberan as the truck route. Um, you know, we, we compare with that, we see that Tiberan Road is the primary truck access. Okay. Um, in the sketch plan that was submitted, there were four sheets, a cover sheet and then three, uh, corresponding sheets to the, the survey and the site plan. I'm gonna flip through these a little quicker so I can get to one of our renderings. Um, this image, all this depicts is there are certain lots within the KIPC that are owned by others. Um, so you see these blue hatched areas. Um, Gamasa Wind owns this triangular piece on the bottom. Uh, Hiosen as well as, uh, Fleck, uh, Sika, some of those users own these small lots at the front. Um, US Steel Galve Line will continue to own this property that y'all voted on the subdivision earlier. Uh, Keystone Knapp and Roebling Mortgage owns this kind of upside-down L-shaped property. Um, so, uh, of the 1,800 acres, there are a few hundred acres in, in, kind of in the middle, holes, if you will, that will be owned by others.
So Jed, ultimately, uh, North Point would maintain ownership of the property and lease the buildings?
Yes. That's correct. Yeah, we, we are a long-term hold company. Um, of the property that we develop, we intend to hold it, uh, forever really and, and lease it back. We would not, uh, we would not want to sell individual parcels. However, sometimes a user needs to own their own. So we will, uh, be subdividing the property by lot, by building. Uh, so we will create separate taxable parcels per building and we'll do that over time as we develop. Um, however, uh, you know, from time to time, there may be a user that needs to own their building. But overall, our vision is to hold the property long-term. There are a couple, uh, slides here with the survey as well as our development plan. And this takes a little bit to load. I'm actually gonna flip to one more where you can see a rendering. Um, so this is, uh, really V1 of our master plan, master sketch plan, which is in front of you tonight. Um, it is, uh, I think we've got 18 total buildings on here. Um, actually 17, it looks like, 18. Uh, encompassing the total 10 million square feet. You can see that PNA, uh, stands for parcel not acquired, property not acquired. Those are the parcels that I mentioned are owned by others that we will not be buying. Um, you'll see a few parcels that say L, that is with an existing tenant that is currently leasing those areas. And then you see that the balance of the site, we've shown new buildings on. So, um, we plan to develop all of the excess ground that does not have a current land lease or building lease on it. Uh, and, and keep in mind, these building leases and land leases, uh, these are, uh, land leases will be assigned as we purchase from US Steel. So these are deals that have been done in the past, such as, uh, GMA Garnet, uh, Covanta, MM Metals, Maza, et cetera, Dominion Energy. So anywhere with an L is a land lease, anywhere with PNA is a property we will not acquire. And then you can see the rest of the buildings here. So we would develop in phases. As mentioned, we'll be back in front of you very soon for phase one, which is building one and two in the north-hand side of the site. Uh, and we will just work our way around the property, uh, as market, as market, uh, conditions allow. Uh, typically when we get a building around 50% leased, we start the process for the next building. So, uh, we would foresee this site, uh, approximately seven years. If the site expands to a larger footprint, um, up to 15 million feet, then it could go, you know, 10 years, 11 years. Uh, so it really is a multi-year project, multi-phase project as we work our way around the property.
And North Point will acquire the properties that are currently leased and just honor the leases? Is that correct?
That's correct. And some of those, and the reason I say that the, the project has the opportunity to expand as some of those leases roll off, um, we may come back in front of you to ask to redevelop that parcel. So, um, if you've been to this site, some of these buildings were built in the 1950s. You know, they're 60, 70 years old at this point. As leases expire, we may choose to, uh, build a new building in its place. So, uh, the plan could get bigger over time, uh, depending on some of those, those, those old leases. So, uh, we've shown, uh, obviously at a high level, the road positioning, we've shown the building locations. Uh, you know, this site will get a, uh, a makeover in terms of, um, you know, the development from the utilities to fresh roadways, resurfacing of roads, um, you know, really just, uh, improving what's out there. A lot of clearing, grubbing, demolition of, uh, old surfaces, old buildings, uh, reconstructing and repositioning railway that's out there. Uh, really just a, you know, an overall facelift to the, to the property in order to make way for new development. And we'll, we'll likely do that in, in phases and chunks and work our way around the site. Um, so over time, you know, the idea is that the site transforms, uh, to a Class A industrial park. And, uh, you know, with users such as, uh, I mentioned on the first slide, Walmart, Amazon, Lowe's, Home Depot, Floor and Decor, General Motors, Ford Motor Company, folks. The sizes of these buildings, um, on the small side is likely about 200,000 square feet. On the big side, uh, up to 2 million square feet. So in the, in the, in the past, a million square foot building was a very large building. Uh, we continue to see more and more users in the marketplace that need, uh, a million, two, a million and a half, even up to 2 million square feet in a. even up to 2 million square feet in a single building footprint. The, the, the size of these buildings in terms of height, we build a building that is 40 foot clear. Meaning from the inside, from the floor to the bottom of the joist is 40 foot clear height. Typically with the parapet wall on the outside, you might get up to 46 to 48 feet in height. So that's our typical spec height. But if there's a build to suit requirement, that might be a mezzanine requirement. Meaning that there's two floors with conveying equipment or racking. The height might get up to 60, might get up to 80, might get up to 100 feet. Some of these types of warehouses. So typical development will be 40 foot clear, but there's a possibility that a specific user may want a taller building. And our building construction, I've got a couple of images here. I'll show you in a second. All concrete tilt up, steel structures. The offices are fit out custom for each user to their spec. But before I move on to any other slides, are there any questions on what we're proposing here?
So you mentioned earlier, the utility systems in, in this area are from the 1950s. Working for some of the larger industrial companies that you listed. Those firms require certain redundant utilities. We know that the sewer and the water down here is, was maintained by US Steel. In, in need of some upgrades along with the electrical utilities. I know for a fact, working in it with Amazon requires a lot of, with the fire pumps, some might have to build a tank system on site. Is that something that you guys are looking forward to and, and with like electrical and water utilities? How are you going to make these things more resilient and redundant with the adequate, adequate systems that's kind of in place now to get these newer companies that want to, that want to come in here?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll answer a couple of parts of that. So, so I'd say first off, the utilities that are here today are in the order of 10x overbuilt on, as to what we need. Meaning there's way more sewer required, available here than what's, what will be required even under a a 10 million square foot plan, way more power. Cause it, it, it was all built to service a 5,000 employee steel plant. Heavy, heavy power, heavy gas, heavy, heavy water, heavy sewer users. So everything's overbuilt. So one of, we have really downsizing and creating efficiency in the systems that are out there. So we think we have a very easy solution for water. We have a water line outside the park that we can tap into. It's currently a, I'll, I'll call it a dual service between TOFA and MMA. I believe MMA sells the water to TOFA. So we think that connection's very, very close within 300 feet of the property line. So I think we'll end up connecting onto that new water line. In terms of raw water, service water that services the existing industrial customers. The systems there are way oversized. Our team in, in Gilmore is studying what type of improvements we need to make to the raw water system. Likely it will include taking pumps offline and consolidating down from, you know, four or five pumps today to, you know, two or three smaller pumps to service just the smaller clientele that, that the raw, raw water's needed. In terms of the electric, same thing, electric is, is way overbuilt. We're looking at with a, a couple set of consultants going through all of the, the substations, all of the gear that's there from the 1960s and 50s to know what do we need to do, what do we need to replace, what do we need to rewire, re-serv in order to serve the existing customers, but also the new ones that we'll be bringing online. We're also in discussions with PICO on potentially bringing direct services to several customers as well as the park. And then in various discussions on the new, on the wastewater treatment system on whether to replace that and or improve what's there. So I'd say we're studying all components of that. And we've got several options for each of them. And as we finish up our engineering, we'll be, you know, finalizing the details there. But it's definitely in the front of our minds. Okay. So this is just another rendering of, of, of really the full build out plan. You know, if this plan could expand, again, it would start out as a 10 million square foot development, potentially scaling up to 15 million square foot at a total investment of a, of a billion and a half dollars. Certainly a, a large project for, for us and for the region. Mentioned a couple of our exterior building examples. So these are all parks that we've built. Riverside Horizons, Hazelwood Logistics, Logistics Park, Kansas City, which is a 17 million square foot park that we own in, in Kansas City. Three Trails, Central Industrial Park. All of these buildings are, are real life examples of, of ones we've constructed. Again, they're concrete tilt up construction. The office fit outs are, are built to the user spec. We built cross dock facilities as well as rear load and, and, and front load facilities, meaning docks are only on one side. Cross dock stocks are on both sides and they're a little bit wider building. Flip to a view of some of the offices, just a few examples of, of tenant fit outs that we've built for customers. Each customer will have their own spec, but generally they've got office buildings, break rooms, small restrooms, conference areas, workstations, things of that nature.
Jed, I had a question for you about that last screen. Is that what you're planning, is that what the outside and everything's going to look like ground wise and everything? When you, when you plan on being done back there? As far as grass curbs and sidewalks and stuff like that?
Yeah, it'll be a, it'll be a good representative example. I'd say we don't, we're not that far detailed with our landscape plans yet or our parking plans. But generally speaking, this is what the, the park will look like. This is what the landscaping will look like.
A little different than what it looks like right now.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Our, our vision is to create a Class A industrial park and completely redevelop what's out there today.
Very good.
And a couple of the interior shots I mentioned. Actually, I'm going to flip now to the environmental overview. So I mentioned in the 1950s, US Steel, that's when they first took over this site. And 93 is really when the, when the EPA stepped in and placed the RICRA consent order on the property. As of today, US Steel has what's, what's called release of liability, ROL on 70% of the site. Meaning that the regulators, and then specifically Pennsylvania DEP under the Act Two program. They look at this site as a 70% cleaned up. There's 30% of the site that still remains to be cleaned up and, and PDEP and EPA, they break the property up into various lots and they've, they've labeled the lots, lot one, two, three, four. I think they're up to 27 or 28. And North Point, as part of our redevelopment, we will clean up the remaining 30% of the property. And we will do that as soon as we buy the property, we will start that process. We're, we're going to fund that privately. That's a, a $25 million investment for us to go clean up the property and lift the consent orders and, and really take a site that is, you know, in the EPA and the, in the PDEPs crosshairs and put it into good standing with the regulators. The great part about what we do in big box construction, big box development is part of the redevelopment plan is to cap the site. Meaning covering the site in concrete boxes, concrete parking lots, concrete roadways is a good thing because it creates a barrier in between, you know, the health and safety of the employee or, or the folks that are out there on that property, between that, them and the, and the soils and the, you know, the conditions of the property. So we are the perfect reuse, we are the perfect redevelopment use for that property. And as mentioned, we'll, we are, we are capitalizing all the cleanup costs, capitalizing all of the development costs into our budget, including the improvements to the utilities that Mr. Haney had asked about. All of that is, is, is in our budget and will be addressed, you know, over time. But specifically the remediation, we will hit that kind of day one.
So once the cleanup is complete and the consent order is lifted, then at that point, is that when the gates are allowed to come down?
Theoretically, yes. Yes, but there's a, there's a potential gates could come down at an early date if the regulators agree with the progress being made. But I'd say the book answer today is not before the consent order is closed out. Okay. Last, last slide here is really just, you know, our North Point's capabilities and experience doing this. We've got an established track record of doing very large redevelopments. Here's a list of projects and properties that our firm has worked on. We've bought sites from other steel companies. As you can see, we just did a project we call Avenueo. We bought that from Republic Steel, Chicago, created 1,300 jobs. I won't list all of these, but several, several sites here are in PA. You see the York PA Eden Road Logistics. That was the former Harley Davidson manufacturing plant. That site was heavily contaminated, had groundwater monitoring wells everywhere. That site can actually have post serial in that building today. Several coal sites in Wilkes-Barre and, and Etta Coke. Several of those sites are now redeveloped and they house Adidas, Patagonia, Chewy.com and many other great users and have produced a lot of great jobs for that, that part of Pennsylvania. In total, just on our brownfield platform alone, we've invested over, over $2 billion over these various projects. So really this was just by way of showing examples of, you know, we've done these type of projects before, capable of doing them, and that's really why we were selected out of a very long list from US Steel to buy the site and take on the redevelopment. So that's all I have. I really appreciate all of your time, look forward to seeing you back again soon for phase one. And love to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Yeah, I, I personally, I, I like what I see. I, I, I like the fact that we're going to turn some of the property back into grass and we'll see some green down there. Mr. Haney and myself are firemen, so I share his concern about the ability to have water back there, sufficient water to handle those large buildings in the event that it's needed, hopefully never needed. But, but I like what I see and, and looking forward to moving forward with this.
Thank you, Mr. Benny.
Any other board members have any comments?
No, I'm excited to see what I see, very great presentation. And obviously you showed a track record that you can prove what you're saying you can do, which is exciting to see too. Look forward to seeing more of you in Falls Township.
Absolutely.
Well, Mr. Guinness, I mean, being a sketch plan, there's no recommendation required from us.
That's right. We, we, we looked at this as, you know, we've had a number of conversations, they've all been great. We're really excited about this and we wanted to present this in public to the township, to the community. I can say personally that North Point has been, has exceeded my expectations in working with them. And I, and I think the township is going to, to see that as well as they continue to deal with them. So I'm very excited about, about this project and we appreciate your time tonight.
I'm going to just ask just in case, Dave, do we have any public?
No, there, there's no public comment.
Okay. Very good.
Well, unless anybody, Mr. Jones, you have anything you'd like to add?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman. I will say that we've worked extensively with the applicant over the last couple of months and, and we echo your point that they're, they're a Class A act and we look forward to working with them.
All right, very good. There's no other comments from the board. I thank you for your time and we appreciate the opportunity to see the sketch plan.
Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you all, have a great night.
Thanks, guys.
All right, the last item of business is to approve the minutes from September 22nd.
Take a motion to approve the minutes from September 22nd.
Second.
Second. All in favor? All right, well, that's it. Today is American Beer Day, so I expect to see everybody at the 5/4th.
All right.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
All in favor? All right, see everybody there. We miss anything, Diane?
No, you guys were good.